Call this meeting to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those are any changes to the agenda? Arthur, all right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, open forum, if anybody would like to speak. And we're on to consent agenda, approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, approval of the investments, and then we had a couple donations, resolution number 2025-36, donation from Sterns Electric Association Trust in an amount of $1,000 to the Melrose Fire Department. And there's another resolution, number 2025-37, a donation from Melrose, I'm sorry, Sterns Electric Association Trust, and another $1,000 would be for the Melrose Ambulance Department. And then there is a police officer step increase, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, reports, Chief Mouse?
Good evening, July in our traffic area, we had 21 citations, 55 verbal warnings and two written warnings, 2025, 269 calls or requests for service, and last year's 236, so we got an increase there. Last year we ended on 1942 in July, and this year was 1915, so a little bit down overall, but increasing month by month, the way it looks. 10 agency assists, which is low for us, but that's a good, good sign to see that either everybody's working in their own backyard and doesn't need our help, or maybe things are getting quieter and safer out there, who knows? A couple things to note, school starting on September 2nd, there's going to be some open houses and those sorts of things happening before that, just keep an eye on the newspaper and/or on the social media to find out when that's all happening. Talked with the superintendent, Dr. Dingman, yesterday, they are going to be releasing a video related to the new flow of the school parking lot, they've been working feverishly over there in the last couple days, and actually through this next couple days here too as well, if the weather holds out, they'll have significant completion done by school starting, so it'll be nice to see. So keep an eye out for some of those things as well. Officer Host is in training right now, and we're looking at mid-September, early October for him to be completed on his own, he has been operating his own squad car with supervision by our officers and those sorts of things when he's doing business, so been catching on to things quite well, so it's good to see. Been working with the city attorney, our new city attorney, related to one junk vehicle that's left that we did have a council abatement to, working through the process as far as setting a court date, hoping that party either resolves it and/or removes it from their property, but they're sluggish shit best. As well as talking with them about introducing potentially an odd even parking rule for winter, talked with Andrew about it, and I scribbled some stuff out, and I want to meet with him and his crew to see how that works or what works best with their crew if something gets implemented for that, but that'll be something that's potentially being worked on with the city attorney. Another area that got brought up is our golf cart ATV ordinance has had no driving on Fifth Avenue Southeast, past the old genio turn, and those sorts of things. And people are starting to question that, and I would agree, is that the why? Originally it was truck traffic, high volumes, those sorts of things, and now people are, you know, because it hasn't been operational for quite some time, maybe having that modified in the future, so that might be a discussion item for the council as far as modifying that ordinance or removing that from the prohibited areas.
That's the old genio plant?
Yep, from Main Street down to the Funeral Home, that section of Fifth Avenue is prohibited from driving on, you can cross, but you can't drive on, so just a note, yeah. Otherwise, I have nothing else.
Say, do you want to just remind people not to pass school buses when their lights are on? Because it seems like every year the last 10 years, you're getting one or two of the first week of school, it seems like, huh?
Those have been dwindling thankfully, but yes, it is that first week or two that it's always an educational process, so hopefully that's going to remedy itself. And one bus company has cameras on their buses now through a grant, and that's been beautiful. Anytime that they've had a violation, we can resolve those real fast.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Finance Director, General Fund, second quarter fiscal, Jackie?
Good evening, tonight I'll be, I will provide a brief overview of the second quarter financial results, highlighting revenues, expenses, and key variances compared to the budget. Okay. Overall, the city's financial position through June 30th remains stable. Investments perform well, though professional and parks and recreations miscellaneous operating expenses came in high. The professional services variance is due to the additional ABDO contract, which was not included in the 2025 budget, and miscellaneous parks and revenues expenses are overstated this quarter until an equipment reimbursement is received. Net income is comparable with last year and will improve next quarter as a second installment of property taxes and state aid are received. This revenue graph includes the first property tax installment received in June, along with the interest income. Investment earnings have already surpassed the full year budget, reflecting strong portfolio performance. Some charges for service will only be recognized at year end, so those remain low now. Expenses are mostly on track, the main driver of over-budget spending is professional services. Maintenance is running under budget, and some timing differences exist, such as building inspection fees paid in July. Net income is holding steady compared to last year. Looking ahead, quarter three results will be higher with inflows of property tax and local government aid. Special revenue funds, MADA, fire, and ambulance, and capital project funds are also performing as expected. Notably, ambulance activity is exceeding budgeted levels with net income outperforming the prior year. As we look ahead, we will continue to review expenditures and investments while monitoring Service Department revenues and costs. With the tax and aid inflows in quarter three, fund balances are expected to strengthen further. That concludes the quarter two 2025 update, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Community Development Director, Sheila?
Hello, so Planning and Zoning had a very busy night at the end of July, they had four public hearings. Their recommendations are coming to you tonight as action items. There currently are three homes under construction on the north side of Melrose, two in Highlands, and one on the northwest side. The Park Board met last week and discussed its priorities for 2026, including the construction of the Railroad West Park between Wabagon Crossings and the Roach Development. I've been in contact with Mr. Roach, and they do plan to start construction of the 17 buildings, 34 units, in the spring of next year. So it won't be summer or fall, he's going to start right away in the spring, construction of those homes. The Sock River Park is enjoying a successful summer with strong camping numbers, occupancy and revenue. In the comments and reviews that the Park Board reviewed the other night, the number one comment that people had was the location of the river and the sounds of the river, and that's the number one comment we have on our little cards that they fill out. MADA met last week and established its priorities for 2026. A real positive has been the number of developers who are reaching out and wanting to work on projects, both housing and commercial. Woods and Irons opened last Friday, there was an article in the Star Post this week about that project, and how really it came from a possible demolition of 400,000 into a, you know, a successful operating business, saving the building. Sterns Electric opened this week in their new headquarters, there is a public open house in October that we want to make sure everybody's invited to, to go take a look at their new headquarters. Their old location is right now being available for lease, so if anyone is interested in the old site. We also want to thank everyone who came out tonight to unite, over 1,000 people joined us for the basically souped-up farmer's market, met with the fire, ambulance, and police departments, enjoyed the music, and shared dessert together, so I want to thank everyone who came out for that.
All right, thank you, Sheila. Dave, City Engineer Report?
All right, good evening, quite a bit of progress on our street project over the last few weeks here, kind of sapped a little while after that concrete work was done with, and then made pretty quick work on the rest of it, so Eighth and Fifth are both done and ready to go. So those are happy news, you get those people back in, they have some seating and that kind of thing behind the curb, but otherwise it's pretty much taken care of. One thing we did find on Fifth over by the hospital, after we pulled off significantly more pavement than expected, there's about eight inches of pavement down out there, and we found out that that was because there's black dirt underneath it. So somebody in the past thought it was a good idea to just pave it without the black dirt, which is not a good idea as it turns out, so we had to remove that. Thankfully, we did have a bid item in the contract for some grid excavation, we're going to overrun that quantity, but at the same time, we didn't have to ask for a change orders, thankfully it was bid that way. So, all in all, it's going to be about $30,000 add to the project, but given where our bids came in, I think the price will okay budget-wise. But again, just to give you that as a heads up, that we had to chase a little black dirt. Nice looking stuff, like I said earlier, could have grown a garden on that thing, but not under our street, so something to keep an eye out for in the future when we're paving in that area in case that was a common practice at the time, but I'm guessing there's nobody around that had any idea that was down there. Otherwise, I've been working with budget items, and that's been about it on my end, so questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
City Administrator, Port Kleen?
So obviously, as we had right before the regular council meeting, we were in a budget workshop. This is the time of year that we are going to be looking at our budgets, both on the general fund side as well as the utility side. We have to set the preliminary levy, and that is due to the county at the end of September, so basically, obviously council knows this, it's maybe for the general audience, so they're aware of it. As part of the budgets for the general fund, we look at streets, parks department, police department, administration, and special revenue funds. We also look at a five-year capital improvement plan. On the utility side, that covers electric, water, and wastewater, and also we look at rate schedules as well during that time period. The Utility Commission will be meeting in September to look at their first budget. We have a new union that has formed, it is comprised of the street department as well as some admin staff, and we will be having our first meeting with that union on August 27th, which is next week, so that is all I have right now. I would say we're about 95% full staff, we still are a little short in a couple areas. All of our part-timers or summer help are going back to school, so I think every department's going to fill that because we, the streets and parks are able to have one this summer, electric as well as water, wastewater, so I think all of those guys will be missed. They enjoyed, we did exit interviews with them, and they all liked working here and everything, so who knows? Maybe we'll get them back next year, we'll see. Other than that, the rest of the items that I have will be on the agenda later.
All right, any questions?
The admin staff, that's part of the union?
There's a, there are two people, two or three people in the admin staff that elected to be part of the new union that formed, yes.
You can do that, okay.
All right, we're on the action items, a preliminary plat for Church of St. Mary's First Edition.
The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment and Appeals had a public hearing on Monday, July 28th for the purpose of giving consideration to a preliminary plat for St. Mary's Church. So I have a picture up on the screen, they are creating residential lots, and also then this gives them the ability to sell the rectory if they so choose. There is an outlot created over along Fifth, their intention is that is going to be a memorial to the old church. Some kind of, some of the materials still left from the old church that are still there, some kind of, and that they're still deciding what that's going to look like, and they've asked for public help for ideas on what that might look like. Because this is a, considered a minor subdivision, we can do the preliminary and the final plat together because they're only creating basically three lots. And so the planning report, as adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, was in your packet, and tonight council to consider the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine whether to approve or deny the preliminary plat and the final plat pursuant to the minor subdivision process.
I can have one quick question, like on that top aisle where the old church was, could they, someone buy it and, you know, buy it again if they want to put in townhomes or something?
Potentially, there is also discussion at different meetings at church about putting some covenants on it to control what goes there. There's obviously some things because of, you know, what was there and the feelings of people, to make sure that it's not used for certain purposes. For example, I don't think they want a commercial purpose, like a bed and breakfast or something for the rectory, so there's probably going to be some covenants in place in terms of how it can be used.
Does anybody have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, there's a permit for MJH Properties LLC?
Yep, Planning and Zoning Commission again held a public hearing on this request from MJH Properties for a conditional use permit on their parcel, got a picture on this one too. This property is, has been used for rental purposes, it includes Heartland Security, it includes a trucking company, there were a couple of open spots. I have been working for several months with both a church and a dance studio that were looking for locations. A portion of this building had already been used for the Twikondol lessons, and so they asked about these other uses. Decided it was best for them to go through the formal process of a conditional use permit since these are technically public institutional uses on a area zoned industrial. You'll see from the planning report as adopted by the commission, they wanted to be very careful, this is not a rezone, this is still an industrial area, this is a temporary use, allowing them to use it for this purpose. It is temporary in terms of one year to be reviewed internally by staff, he does not have to go through the conditional use process again if they choose to continue using it, and we don't have any problems. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed at length parking and all the things. Really, the times when these uses are being held are when the metal works and the electric bills are not in use, it's when the traffic is down. One of the reasons the church that is, wants to use this property is interested in it is a lot of their congregation live in the townhomes and live in the apartments, so for them, it makes it feel like a neighborhood church. And it really is off time in terms of everything else over on Eighth. And so the council to consider tonight the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and determine whether to approve or deny the conditional use permit for MJH property on the parcel.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, another CUP for the city of Melrose this time?
Yes, as we had to do when we built the bathroom in the floodplain, whenever the city wants to do something, we want to make sure we follow the same laws we have in place for everyone else. So as you'll recall, we've had two different billboard companies come recently asking for billboards on the east and the west side. This is for the potential of an electronic billboard in our Wellhead area. We have not reached a contract with a billboard company, we haven't determined the exact location yet, but this would be the conditional use permit allowing the city to look at that site for an electronic board.
Is there any questions?
I thought we did this already.
Not for this, we said we'd look at going forward within, now we're at the point where we're getting closer.
Yep.
But not done yet. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Flatbed trailer?
So the council, staff has obtained quotes for flatbed trailer, the low bid was from Mid-Soda Trailer Sales and Services in the amount of $13,250. The cost will be shared, 60-40 with the streets and parks department, 60% coming from utility, 40% from the general fund. The council to give consideration concurring with the Melrose Public Utilities Commission, approving the purchase with a 60-40 cost share.
Motion to approve?
So move.
There's a person, a second, I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, resolution number 2025-38 gambling, gambling resolution for the Melrose Area Chamber of Commerce, anybody want to talk on that one, or?
Basically, there's a, the chamber's requesting that they receive a gambling license to conduct big goal and hold a raffle on November 7th at the Legion in Melrose.
Just curious, isn't this normally part of the consent agenda?
Yes, but I, she has to abstain.
I have to abstain.
Oh, I got you, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so that's why we wanted to make this up right, yep.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to?
So move.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, charter spectrum franchise agreement?
So I met with Charter Spectrum Communications to discuss entering into a new franchise agreement. The initial renewal would be for a period of 10 years and automatically extend for an additional term of five years, unless either party notifies the other in writing of its desire to not exercise this automatic extension at least three years before the expiration of the franchise. The franchise fee is equal to 5% of whatever their gross revenue is. We receive approximately $18,000 per year in fees from Charter Spectrum, so we have the same exact franchise agreement with Arby, we have it with the electric department, so.
How does that work as they go over the top and they're not truly a channel for like a video franchise?
They just, it's, it's all they're offering, so it's whatever they have in their.
So like Google TV or, they don't have to pay a franchise fee, but the local guys do?
Yep, it's whatever's in the contract.
You're talking streaming services?
Well, no, so they're paying because of their infrastructure that's in our community.
Yeah, same with Arby, I was like, I was.
In the right ways.
They're paying for infrastructure.
They're paying for the infrastructure.
Yep, and same with, that's exactly what everyone does, so.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, community possible license by Hispanic Ministry of St. Mary's Church. Was there any questions or concerns on that, September 5th? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, ambulance department equipment purchase?
So, the ambulance department would like to request a purchase of a vet machine to carry their rig. Coordinator Egert obtained two quotes, one from Zoll and one from Hamilton. She is recommending that the Hamilton medical vet be purchased at a cost of $20,115.09. The funds to purchase the equipment would come from the EMS grant from the state of Minnesota that they received at the beginning of this year. So she had allocated a whole bunch of different equipment, but it's just like anything, you know, with their purchasing, has to come back before you guys, and that is what she is requesting for the ambulance.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, glad to see that. Old business, resolution number 2025-32, resolution establishing a fire escrow account.
So we are bringing this one back, you tabled it two months ago, this was the discussion on the fire escrow fund. The same materials were in your packet, along with a staff memo that I had put together from all the different cities that I had called and talked to and reached out to about their different fire funds. I don't know if it alleviates the questions or concerns that you had. For the most part, it seems to be working for them, the ones that have had to use it. There seems to be a difference in some of the cities in terms of when they return the money, and it seems like we have some latitude in terms of what is our threshold. So the one city returns it as soon as there's a building permit in place, or they have some skin in the game, or a demolition permit has been applied to and things have been started, another city holds it until the project is complete and there's a certificate of occupancy. It sounds like we've got some latitude there in terms of how we would want to implement it if we had the escrow fund. But I know you wanted additional information on other cities who use it and how they use it.
Discussion, because I know that we are all looking at it a lot of different ways, so who wants to start first?
I would have liked to hear the people that actually were affected by it, the people that had the disaster or had the loss, to see how big of an impact it was for them. Was it a burden for them, I mean, if it wasn't a burden at all, then a lot of my concerns kind of melt away, but if it was a burden from them, and it did put restrictions on them, well then, I'm way more reserved than what against it.
And the other option the one city did was, if, if the owner came to them and it became a burden because they had people to pay, they released the funds, but they made them copayable to both the homeowner and the contractor so that they could use it to pay their bills, but the money was then directed to its purpose, the contractor.
I'm trying to make a difference, because I feel like the whole point of it is to make sure the work gets done instead of having the things abandoned, but if you need the money to fix it up then, and it's tied up in a program.
I, I can appreciate the, the angle and the, the logic behind it, but it feels a little bit nanny state. It's, we're, somebody's getting insurance for their house that kind of fire, and now we're saying, sorry, you can't, you can't have that money, we're taking 25% of it just in case, you don't, you're not a responsible individual, and you don't do something with that house in, in our timeframe. There's been a handful of structures that we're not taking care of in a timely manner. Generally, we kind of, you know, is that a part of a burden of the city? Maybe that should be part of our burden as a, as a community, if somebody's not responsible? I don't know, we need to punish everybody because one kid screwed up in class, like when we were in grade school, one kid screws up, now nobody gets to go to recess, type of thing. I don't, I don't really like it, it's, it feels a little bit socialist in a way, like micromanaging everybody and their, and their, up their affairs, so I, I couldn't be in support of it myself, I just, it doesn't feel right.
You know, I, I really do agree with you, I have one question. So for example, the fire that we have over by the school, do we know, do they still have insurance on their house and property? The reason why I ask is, you have a school right next door, you know how kids are, kids are curious, and we'd be worried about, about anybody's home, but especially being in a school, you know, what happens if one of those kids over by that school wander over and fall in and get hurt? Who's responsible for it? And I know, well, you know that, and some of us know, you know, and stuff like that, outside that we get some real hot days. Is there any worry about any hazardous, we know with, with some of this debris? Is it getting into the school, could it, I mean, these are things that I'm, I'm a little worried about, where that's the only part of this, I sort of understand, but I'm a little concerned that, you know, some people don't care, they leave it go, I've seen a couple places where they're burnt for a couple of years, I know, what is it, driving out towards Benson, there's a house that, or wherever, it's been like that for four years now, half burned, and where do we draw a line? But taking the money and keep, you know, I don't like that either, but we have to find some way to move on with school.
What's, okay, so in, if the scenario, if we did it, what's the, you know, what does it look like? Is it three months we hold on to it, and if they haven't done anything, we take that 25%, we do something with it, or is it six months, or is it a year, or if you don't get any response in six months, you go wrap the house in some type of protection so it can't cause issues? Because you know what's going to happen? We're going to find a way to spend the money.
You can't spend the money.
You can if they're not doing something with it, that's the way, that's what this whole policy is all about.
But it would be, but it would be for that property.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Pick stuff away.
Yeah, to take care of it.
You know, sort of like we had that arson house where that person lit their house on, there was nothing we could do, the city ate that that time, and we burnt the house the rest of the way down.
Right.
So, I mean, this, I, I agree with you 100%, but just these two case scenarios are what bothers me.
I think something is going to happen with that one.
Well, and I think that, I would be in support of it as if there's a Hard Rock Plan and says, okay, well, I'm going to go get bids tomorrow, and blah, 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 and we're spending money next week. I think there's ways we can, is there a way we can do it then?
Yeah, you can set up the timeframe, that's kind of the scenario we got from the different cities. The one city, the moment they applied for a building permit or a demo permit, they got their money back. That was just a sign that they were doing something. A different city held it all the way until a certificate of occupancy, that seems to me to be a very, very long time.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing, I would be in favor, but the other one, I am not, you know, like if we keep it to that, I am not in favor of that at all. So I guess, that's where I'm asking, I guess, now you two have your.
I would agree that we would go forward with something, but do it in that, in that timeframe of, okay, now we've got the contracts in place, they're signed, they're ready to go, we can release.
Travis?
I feel like it's, I like the idea of a demo permit or pull the permit, I don't know what happens if they pay for the permit and then don't continue the work. I feel like it's, I, I like the idea of a demo permit or pull the permit. I don't know what happens if they pay for the permit and then don't continue the work. I mean, if that's a scenario, but.
And you can probably put that in there, in conjunction, permit pulled, and it's happening, you know.
The shorter amount of time, I guess, is what I would pick, but I'm not sure how you pull these up from there.
I don't know.
Is this the only remedy we have to get it fixed? Or we have no other, I mean, if we went to the city attorney, are there other ways to push it other than taking their private insurance money that they're paying the premiums on?
Well, according to the fire chief, this was the best protection for us as a city.
That's fine as a city, as a city council member, I'm elected for the people, right?
Right.
That's, that's your guys' job as a city, to look out for the business. My job as a council member is to look out for the constituents of Melrose, right? So I wanna do what's best for them, not necessarily, I wanna do what's best for Philip, obviously.
Right, and that's what I meant in that comment.
And the thing is, if we get attorneys involved, then we're spending our own money just for this, and then they're gonna, and we know like with what Craig has to do every spring, some people push it as long as they can, until the day of court, then they finally pay it. And then we wait till the attorney fees up to that point, and if they would've just did it right away, would've saved all of us a lot of time and money. I mean, I'm in favor of it doing it, this, I'm not in favor of it long-term.
Right.
I don't know, is that anywhere of a compromise for you two?
Can you please restate our compromise? I didn't quite.
So basically, if they come in, let's say they have a fire, and they say, alright, here is, insurance said this and this. I'm gonna demo the house, and it'll be demoed within three weeks, or I'm gonna get permits and it's gonna start within two months. I, I'm, I'm good with releasing funds as long as it is actual, you know, okay, contractor said it's moving along, we're gonna be there on the fifteenth to do demolition, or we're gonna start remodeling. I'm, as long as it's as much of a guarantee as we can get out of the deal.
That the permits have been pulled by a contractor, then we release the money, 'cause there's a contractor on the hook.
Yeah.
Who've been hired to do the work.
Yes.
And what's the deadline on this? After the fire?
We.
We need to determine.
Yeah, you can determine. How long do they have?
It should have something in there, you know, obviously a deadline, but not every fire is the same either, right? So some fires are, I mean, that was a bad fire, so Alice is tough shape. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff to get through.
Right, how long does it take for investigation? Is it a sixty-day, ninety-day?
No, I don't think it's that long, but, but the, the, just the condition of the house, I mean, to get through it, to get all your stuff out of it, to dig through that is, that can take a long time, right? So.
Or if there was an investigation for arson, or I can take time.
If you can get back.
Well, and if it's under investigation, nobody's getting no money anyways, 'cause that's, that's stopped.
Yeah, the insurance hasn't.
Well, insurance ain't gonna pay on that one anyway, yeah.
Right.
So I think if we can, we can work through this, I'm willing to go this far, and.
So this will have to be re-drafted.
What was the timeframe? Was it six months?
We, as a city, you can establish whatever policy. All this is, is a resolution opting into the program. And then it's for us to determine from there.
The conditions and the percentage.
Okay.
Could we do, I mean, worst-case scenario in my mind, it's demoing, returning that lot to a flat lot, open lot, getting rid of the, the house on it, right? That's the, that's the goal. So could you set it up in a manner of, I mean, if it passes, in a manner of, what's it gonna cost? 'Cause that should be, be an estimated cost of demoing whatever property that burns. Pretty quickly, you should be able to get an estimate of what does it cost to tear it down. Because single-family residences, there's no abatement requirements, sounds of single-family residents. And you get to a quadplex, I think, four, if it's a four-plex, I think now you gotta get into abatements and all, then it gets expensive. But single-family residences, you should be able to get a pretty quick estimate and then base your retainage on the demo of that building, right? Not just say twenty-five percent. 'Cause there's gonna be some four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, that's a hundred thousand dollars. You don't need a hundred thousand dollars to retain, do, demo that building.
Depends if it's an old house and they have asbestos in it, or.
Doesn't, that doesn't apply. Single-family residences, state statute, doesn't apply.
I think, I think statutorily, though, it's twenty-five percent.
Well, I thought it was anything up to twenty-five percent, or anyway, so. Anyway, it was just something I, in my mind, if we could put a condition on there, say we're estimating it, the cost, worst-case scenario, we demo.
So we, but we do that after, right?
Now, we would, by the way.
We do that after. We're just accepting this.
Twenty percent of settlement or judgment is withheld.
Twenty-five percent. That's what the statute does.
Well, the thing is, is twenty-five percent, so what if we keep that? I mean, you're not gonna need seventy-five percent upfront right away.
They're gonna take the payment off to you and the mortgage holder or the lien holder, right?
Yeah.
The lien holder's gonna take their share first.
Take their share. But if you start applying for your permits, I mean, you, you have, well, like our projects, you got steps. Like when you get a quarter through, you gotta pay this amount, you know, you have your, your last twenty-five percent won't be until you're almost done. But we can release it sooner, I'm just saying, it would give us at least a little bit of time.
Might be, you know, got a ninety percent mortgage left to pay. Now they're left with ten percent of their value in their insurance policy. They don't have a house to live in, now they gotta go find a place to rent. Just saying.
It would have to be very lim, if we adopt into this.
What's that?
I was just asking if it has to be adopted today.
Oh, it doesn't, no.
We can table again.
We can table it again, but how many more times do we wanna table it?
Until everything's clear, is what I was thinking, but.
If we elect into it, and then we have to decide on the terms, what happens if we can't decide on the terms? Do we come opt back out of it? So the terms really should be decided before we go into it, so we know what we're agreeing to.
Like if you can't do anything other than twenty-five percent, or if there's any other, I don't know enough about it right now and the detail of what we are allowed to do or not do once, where if we opt in and we can't change something we think we can.
If you opt, opt in, it said you had the opportunity, but you had to put it in writing, was it ninety days or something like that, you had to get out of it? So once you're in it, you're in it for like a year for sure.
This initially was brought to the table because we had some issues in town, right?
Yeah, what happened was, after this last fire, the state fire marshal approached Fire Chief Booty about, are you a member of this program? You should really consider being a member of this program. And so this was suggested by Fire Chief Booty.
I think there's a lot of good pieces to it, I just don't know. I mean, there are some concerning points with tying up someone's insurance money, but I know the concept is to remedy the, you know, the problem with it.
And that one city did narrow it, so if it's just a detached garage, they don't implement the program, only if it's a primary structure.
Well, we're on month.
Can we add this to our work, our discussion next month to finalize that part?
What do we all need to make a decision here? 'Cause I really, this was given to us last month and we wanted more information, but if there's any more questions, I would like everybody to please ask these questions so we don't have to table it again.
I wanna see in writing what the terms actually are before agreeing to it.
So what we could do, if you would like, is we could have our city attorney draft up what it would look like. If that would make you guys more comfortable, based on the concerns that you've expressed here and everything, we can have our city attorney draft it.
We could draft a pretty simple memo of understanding that if internally, as a city, these are the criteria we're gonna use. This is how fast we're gonna return it, and this is on what conditions we're gonna give it back to.
And we'll have the attorney look at it, so we make sure that we are meeting the statute.
If the terms are liberal, it would be clear to the community, then.
Yep.
If the terms are as liberal as you're, then I would vote for it, if they're citizen-friendly.
And I agree with you on that, too. I don't want it to be stringent, but I just want something to happen. I'm just, like I said, I'm just using that as a case, you know, if some little kid goes over there, by the way, do they have insurance on the property right now? I mean, and then if one of those kids goes and plays in the, who's responsible?
It's no different than a storm, though. I mean, it's a natural disaster. I mean, there's only, I get where you're coming from, but I think that'd be a good compromise, though, if we make it easy for the citizen and have the city have a little bit of protection. I could get on board.
Yeah, we could put together a MOU, as Sheila said, and then we could just have our attorney look at it to make sure it meets the Minnesota statute.
Yeah, then so whoever is the staff person, whoever is the fire chief, whoever is the police chief, everybody knows that this is what we established as a council. So it doesn't vary with the personnel.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so then we will table that. We are done with old business. There is no new business. So then we're on informational items, utility commission meeting minutes, schools and conferences. Unless there's any other questions, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.